All right, at 7 o'clock, we will call the Village Board meeting to order if everyone would rise to say the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Morevka. Okay. Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Yep.
Ham. Bowden.
Here.
Okay, so we're missing Morevka and Ham.
Yeah. Trustee Morevka is having trouble connecting. All right, she's trying again. Um, approval or corrections to the minutes of the April 13th, 2020 regular Village Board meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Not a motion to approve the minutes.
It's almost March and Parker.
Morevka is here.
All right. So we have a motion by trustee March, trustee Parker, or yours is the second, okay?
That's good.
Okay.
March.
Yes.
Parker.
Yep.
Ham, oh, Ham's not here. Um, Bowden.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Okay, I think I got everything.
Yep. Accounts payable and payroll, payroll pay period ending 4/18/20 in the amount of $48,964.05. Accounts payable $42,203.05, giving a total for all current funds $42,203.05. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If not, a motion to pay the bills and the payroll.
Morevka motion.
Second.
Parker, second.
Motion by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Parker.
Morevka.
Yes.
Parker.
Yep.
Bowden.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, public comment and/or questions. Do we have any public on the line? All right, I know we have a representative from Aqua on the line.
Yep. Uh, Tracy Follen and Andrew Seraphini are here with Aqua. We thought we would provide the board with an update on construction projects that we have going.
Okay, great, go ahead.
Okay. So we have the 24-inch diameter, uh, interconnect water main project. We've got two section of that. Uh, the first section is the rural section that goes from Egyptian Trail and Peatone Beach Road, and that extends to Howard as Park. That portion is pretty much complete. We have all of the main installed. Uh, we do have pressure testing, sampling, and restoration still to complete on that section. The urban section then picks up from Howard as Park, and that extends to Corning and Wesley. This portion, uh, we have not started construction. The EPA has indicated that they will release us to complete it, but they haven't given us the go-ahead yet, so we're kind of waiting on them to award the project. Um, I don't really have an idea of when it's going to get started. Uh, likely, we would like it to be complete by October, but, uh, I can update you as we move along on that. Uh, the next project is the Corning Avenue. This is a water, another water main project. Uh, this one extends from Rapp on Corning to Route 50. The plans have been submitted to EPA for permitting. Uh, this week, we are finalizing the bid doc, and we are looking to open bids in about three weeks. Um, this one, we are slated to have complete, I believe, by September the 1st. Uh, I've got one final project. It's the Howard lift station replacement. Uh, we did award this to Ren Construction. Uh, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we, we got a delay in construction on that one, but we are looking to get that started here in May. Um, I know Angela is with me on the phone. I don't know if she has anything to add, or if anybody has any questions.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, Tracy. Thank you for the update, but if anybody has any questions, we gladly try to answer them or find an answer for you.
Trustees, do you have any questions?
How has the water, um, testing been going on? Like, how has it been doing? Have we gotten any word on that, the one that's over at the park right now?
Sure. So we are, I'm not a part of that team. I understand it's going very well. Uh, we are still running the Peatone water through the test, through the rig. Um, we, we are, feel like we're ready to switch to tanky key water to start that testing, but we have to wait for EPA to allow us to do that.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for the update. We really appreciate that.
You're most welcome.
Have a good night.
Feel free, feel free to reach out to us if anybody has questions, you know, other than during these meetings.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, if any trustees have any questions, you can direct them to either Amy or I, and, uh, and then we'll give answers for you from, uh, the Aqua ropes.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, we'll move on to reports of committees. Uh, Village Administrator Report.
Um, I'll report, uh, a little bit of for Public Works. Um, we did receive a final inspection on and approval for the Public Works building. Um, that's been long, uh, coming, and so the only outstanding item we have to complete for the county there is landscaping, so the Public Works will complete that work in-house in order to save money. We've requested a temporary occupancy so we can move in and fully utilize the building while we get that landscaping complete. I've talked to the head inspector with the county, and he is open to that possibility. We just have to get a variance on the landscaping. We are not able to comply to, uh, the letter of their code, so we need to, uh, get that, request a variance, and we're working with the county on how we can do that, so, um, we'll keep you, um, posted on that. We don't have natural gas to the building yet. We continue to work with NICOR on when that will become available and reach out to them for updates. We'll keep you posted on that as well. We are working on getting phones for the entire village, including the new Public Works building. We are, been delayed, I guess you could say, due to the, due to the COVID, um, getting that installation done. Um, but we should be getting install, installed towards the end of May. For finance, um, in your, in your, in your packet, you have the report for February, and you should have been emailed the report for March. If you haven't, just let me know, and we'll get that to you. Um, you also have, uh, an investment, uh, account report for, uh, February of '20. You should have a quarterly report coming to you this month, but you also have in your packet, um, an update on the appropriation ordinance recap that Marcy sent you, and, um, you'll notice that we did exceed the upper limits of our appropriation ordinance in a few line items. However, uh, we did stay within our limits due to the contingency in our general fund. Uh, we will be approving our current year appropriation probably in May, so look for that. And I just wanted to let you know that we'll be, uh, putting our budget for the last two years on the website. Um, I will be looking to put some more information on finance on a new website, but we're not going to be doing a new website due to not, um, any, doing any unnecessary expenditures. Um, we'll redo our website at a later date and populate a, a finance, uh, page with more information, but I think it's-
You're really chappy because of someone, I don't know if it's someone's mute tone or what, but I'm only getting about every other word.
Well, that stinks.
Yeah, it's in here.
Okay.
They do. They need to respond.
Okay. I'll come, I'll come closer to the phone. How about that?
Why don't you move the phone over?
I can't. It's not, it's not big enough. Um, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, good.
Oh, okay. I was too far away. Um, the last thing, I won't repeat myself on the, on the other stuff unless you want me to, but, um, a lot of inquiries are coming in for garage sales, garage sale permits, or maybe some, not a lot.
Some.
But, um-
They're beginning.
It might be something that you want to think about or talk about, whether you want to issue them or hold off, and what, what you would like for staff to do.
Um, my, personally, I think, you know, if, if it's an outside event and people are practicing social distancing and if they're wearing masks when masks are being required, you know, it's hard to stop something like that.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, it's not like we're gathering 100 people together for a cash bash or something of that nature, you know, but it's an outside garage sale, you know, like I said, just, we just need to practice social distancing.
I say go for it.
Okay. Um, did you catch what I said about the Public Works building?
Yeah.
Okay, where we're-
Yeah, for the most part, we got it.
Okay. And that's all I had for, for my report.
Okay. Very good. Uh, no police chiefs report, engineers report?
Engineers report, uh, we have the side, the DCO grant sidewalk ramp project. The construction is complete, and they're doing walkthrough and punch list items, and you'll notice that there's a payout on the agenda for that, so that it will be totally complete, and that's all.
Okay. Uh, treasures report and quarterly report are in your packages. All right, no old business? Yes?
Hey, before we move on, pass treasurer, but Amy, I saw that note you passed out to all of the department heads.
Yes.
Um, that, that looked great as far as, you know, letting everybody know that we're going to have a ginormous revenue shortfall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm just wondering what, how, have we had a chance to do any sort of projections as far as what if retail sales tax is 25% of normal, 50% of normal, um, and then what that means in dollars for, for the department head?
We have not done any additional projections, but I have some models that I've passed on to Marcy, so she's not, she wasn't in today, but I'm going to go over them with her and see if we can start to populate those, so we have some actual projections based on historical numbers and then plugging in some numbers to go forward, so we can have some, some data to show you guys and come up with some, some solid figures that we can actually model.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I, I think it's going to take some draconian cuts, and we probably won't even be able to cut our way back to a balanced budget, so I just think that we got to be looking at that hard every, you know, more often than not.
Well, and I was, I was going to say, uh, that, you know, I think administrative oversight can meet, you know, we can meet at a meeting such as this, all we have to do is post an agenda, you know, and we can do it by phone, and I think that might be something that we need to work with, you know, in between board meetings.
Okay.
So if, you know, if the members of administrative oversight want to, you know, maybe kind of look at their calendars and, like, Peter, you're the, the chair of that committee, correct?
Correct.
So maybe, uh, you can get with Amy and, you know, maybe sometime next week, have a meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's no problem. Uh, if, if there's just three or four of us at a committee meeting, can we meet in the village hall with masks on?
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think there's a problem with that. If you're comfortable with that, I think there's enough room, you know, in, in the meeting room where you can sit apart, and like you said, if you, if you have a mask on, I think you can certainly do that. I think for the full board, it would be very difficult, but I think for a committee, you can certainly do that.
That sounds good, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, no old business, move on to new business. Item A, P and Z case number PZ20PO1200 West Crawford Street, varies to allow a minimum lot size of 12,000 square foot to 9,900 square foot and a maximum lot coverage of 30% to 39%. Amy, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So the Community Presbyterian Church at Mantino submitted application for, uh, vary, these two variances at 200 West Crawford Street. You have the plat in the application, and you also, we also have representative from the applicant on the line with us if you have any questions. And this property ha, is where the food pantry building is. They would like to, the church would like to continue to use that property, like, as a community outreach facility, but then to sell the church portion off, um, to another user to be used as a single-family residence, to be developed as single-family, they would need, if there was, split that lot, they would need a variance on the southern portion of the lot, and that's what the variances would apply to. The plan commission heard the application and made a recommendation, made a recommendation for, uh, allowance of the variances to be granted. The vote was five yeses, one no, and one absent. The findings are factored in your packet.
This is Mike, and I got a few questions on this. Um, why would we need to provide a variance if the person that wanted to buy the church just leased back that, uh, property in the back?
Well, I don't think, at least my understanding is, I don't think they were trying to sell the other building. They're just trying to sell the church building.
Correct. So they want us to create a variance so they can split a lot and maintain part of that property?
Correct. And that was, that was the object of the variance.
If the food, if the food pantry ever moved or went out of business, then what does that become at that point?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
So then we got a, a building sitting on a half a lot, um, with no parking, um, and they'll probably come back and want another variance to do whatever, so we really don't know what or how that would be, be developed. And then as far as having a single-family house on the front of that lot, because it is basically a new house, will they be required to have a, a garage?
No, there's no garage requirement, but parking is required.
Why wouldn't there be a garage requirement? Because you built a new home, we've got to have garage, and in essence, this is a new home.
The parking requirements in the code do not require a covered parking. The two spaces uncovered is required.
For new, new construction, new homes?
No, those are the parking requirements in the, in that zoning.
In, in R3 zoning?
In the, in the parking regulations, that's what's required.
But I, I don't understand how you can have a, a new home and not have a garage requirement.
I think, Mike, uh, is because, uh, most of the new homes come in with a subdivision, and so, uh, our subdivision ordinance covers that, whereas this is an existing, you know, land that, uh, I think that's where the difference is.
Yeah, I, I realize that that is a difference, but in essence, it is a new home and, um, another question I've got on the back, on this plat down towards the bottom, that's its private alley? Who owns that?
When you get to the flat. Dave, are you on there?
Yes, I am.
Can you answer that?
My understanding is that it's owned by the two, uh, adjacent property owners, so the, the top portion would be owned by Community Presbyterian, the bottom half of the private alley would be owned by the, the landowner to the south. I don't know the identity of that individual.
Is that a paved alley?
Yes, I believe so.
And then my next question is, who's maintaining it? Who's paving it and, and doing all the, uh, snow removal and, uh, resurfacing? And if it's the village, my question would be why, if it's a private alley?
That, that I don't know, honestly, personally. Um, I would, I would think that's the case, too, if it's a private alley, taking care of it.
I'm sorry you broke up on me.
I'm sorry. This is Dave, uh, I'm the representative of Community Presbyterian. Um, I don't know, I, I would, I would assume it's the same, that it wouldn't be the village who is taking care of it, that it wouldn't be the private landowners.
And has that been the case?
I can't say one way or the other, honestly.
That's the little alley it's private own, so it goes all the way through the lot?
Yeah, it runs from one, oh, I can't, from First Street to, uh-
West.
Yeah. But what, what could that become? I mean, if they decided to not be food pantry anymore, uh, are we looking at another goofy who knows what? I mean-
It's zoned R3.
I would, which would be-
Residential.
So you got a residential house that would take up 90% of the lot and, uh, no parking? I, I don't see why they don't just sell the whole thing and lease it, if the guy doesn't want to deal with it, just lease it back to him for a couple bucks.
So Amy, this is Pat Bowden. So if, if, uh, the food pantry, since it's residential, that means it could be converted, it also could be converted for somebody to live there?
Yes. But it would have to go through a plan commission.
Does R3 allow a multifamily?
It does with a special use, but only a two-family. It couldn't be more than two-family.
So it could turn into-
A duplex.
A multifamily apartment type?
No, it could only, it could only be a two-family dwelling.
So it'd be a duplex with no place to park?
duplex with no place to park, yeah.
So it wouldn't, then it wouldn't get a special use for that. But there are provisions in the parking code that there could be exceptions, or there could be parking adjacent somewhere, I mean, there are, or you could give it a variance or something like that.
Sure, sure, you chop it up into, to three parcels at that point, build a duplex and sell off half of it. I think just chopping this whole thing up and, and, uh, to make accommodations so the person who wants to buy track one can, uh, remodel that and make a fast buck, and the, uh, the church hangs on your back piece and hope that it'll be worth some money down the road, and, uh, basically, I have a master chunk of land there that, uh, it would all be solved if they would just buy the whole thing and then let the food pantry use it or lease it to them or whatever.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I jump in on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, again, this is Dave Barrett on behalf of Community Presbyterian. I, I represent the church that is seeking to retain the, the bottom track. Um, I don't represent necessarily Michael Hitzman, Hitzman Properties, who is speaking about the top track. Uh, the, there, I can tell you that the request to hold on to the, the southern property came as a request of the church. The church has been a community for several decades. Um, it wanted to maintain that ownership of property within Peatone, didn't anticipate an ongoing lease relationship, um, that hasn't been negotiated by the parties, that has not been approached. Uh, but the idea was to maintain a stable, solid, uh, presence in Peatone as it has done, continue on the, the way that it has by using it as a community outreach center, specifically with the food pantry. Um, so that, that is, is the intention for the, the church to remain a part of the community in that way.
Well, intentions are great, but when they built that as a, I think, a church school, that was the intention, too, that it would be that way forever. Now, here we are looking at it, and, uh, and that's not what it's going to be anymore, and nothing's forever, and, uh, it, it just seems like it's, it's too convenient for the buyer and too convenient for the church just to, to chop this up, and, uh, we have to live with what we get. I don't like it.
If I could, if I could, I know that holding on to the, the property was a contingency of the vote that went before the, the, uh, church congregation when, when we didn't mean to talk about this. It would be very difficult to find a buyer for both of these properties, um, at, at one track. An old church sanctuary and a building like this, um, we're not going to find too many buyers on the open market. This is an open, this is a buyer who's willing to come and make use of a property that is vacant, um, and that will likely remain vacant for some time. Uh, we have that set up, we've gone through all the congregational approvals to make that happen. I, we don't have the, the lease agreement, we don't have any sort of lease relationship, um, laid out. The, and again, the, the church and the building to the south were put up decades ago, well before the zoning code was in place, um, so this is not a situation where the, the entities were trying to make a quick buck. Um, this is, this is how the zoning code was, was put down upon the buildings that exist now, and this is trying to make the best use of a, a property for, uh, two situations where you'll have a used single-family residence and you will have a, you know, the outreach building that is, that is used.
All right, any other questions?
The purchase of the North Peak, the old church, that, have they disclosed what their intended use is?
They are going to, uh, remodel it into a single-family home, uh, not for their use, but to, um-
To flip it?
Right. But for a single family, single-family use.
Yeah. So in between those two buildings, there's a lot of common sidewalks and stuff, has anybody, um, talked about how that's all going to be, I guess, agreed to, or, or how that all is going to work?
Yeah, they did talk about that at, um, the P and Z. Um, Dave, I, I'll let you kind of talk about that.
Sure, the, the parties, we have talked about that specifically. The parties do intend to, um, execute a license agreement, um, so that the, the residents of the, uh, property on the north would be able to utilize that concrete sidewalk for as long as that wood ramp remains in place.
Any other questions or comments from the trustees?
The only other comment I would have is that, yes, it would be more difficult to find a buyer, but the pricing would certainly dictate a buyer would come into, uh, into play, and how much they would or wouldn't get for it, I don't know, but, uh- how much they would or wouldn't get for it, I don't know. But there are buyers out there. It's just that obviously the price is going to be right and that's how it would work. Or the guy that wants to buy the front, buy the whole thing. I mean, they're not going to make any money off it. So if he owned it and had to maintain it, they could use it. Everybody lives happily ever after.
So Amy, or maybe Jim, can you answer this? This is Pete March. So if we grant this variance, can then the church sell that building to somebody if somebody could convert it to even just a single-family home and they wouldn't have to get any other variance at all of that, correct?
That would be correct as long as the conversion of the building can be in accord with our applicable codes because this isn't a special use, it's a variance. So the variance would go with the lot. The variance would stay.
Very. Can we, instead of granting a variance, can we do a special use instead?
Well, perhaps. Unfortunately, I didn't, I wasn't able to look at it in terms of exactly what they're, I know what they're trying to accomplish. And I spoke to Amy briefly on that. But whether or not we could, we can, to this end, I don't recall, what are our special uses in R3 right now?
I'd have to look at the code to rattle them off to you, but...
Yeah. I'm thinking that perhaps if we can find a applicable special use for a food pantry in an R3, we could approach it that way.
Because I just, I mean, obviously, all of us are, you know, in favor of having a food pantry in town. I mean, that's not the intent of any of us to kick the food pantry out of town. I guess, just as, you know, as trustees, we have to look to the future that, you know, we don't want this to, you know, in 10 years, become something that we don't want it to become. So I would be more comfortable if there'd be a special use that, you know, the church or whoever the buyer would be, would have to come back to the board to get anything else approved instead of just leaving it out there that somebody could put that into a single-family home at some point.
Well, that's the problem. You know, the special use and with the change of ownership or a change of use, the underlying zoning would still be R3.
Right.
Which would permit the residential use and with the variance, I assume the variance there is for the lot coverage and...
Yes.
And the lot size.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, they would then have a variance for that lot size and lot coverage for any permissible R3 use.
Right. But if we tried to make it a special use, then it would be a little, there would be more restrictive, correct?
Well, they couldn't. They, they could, they would have to, it would have to be a residential use that they would be automatically entitled to, yes. A permissible R3 use.
Oh. So it wouldn't, it really wouldn't change anything?
And you can't create two lot sizes there that are going to be compliant with current R3 standards. It just won't happen there. It's not big enough.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject and to say, we did take a look at the special uses that are available for R3s and didn't see any that would be able to fit for this situation. You know, it is an existing use. It's an established use, grandfathered in. We did consider that hat, but we did not believe it was available.
And since the use isn't changing, that's, we didn't think that a special use was applicable in this situation.
That's correct. If the church continues to own it.
Well, I mean, is there anything that we can do, Jim, that, you know, in granting this variance, is there any restrictions that we can put that, you know, if there's a change of ownership, that it's got to come before us? But I guess what you do with variance is R3, anybody could put a home there, I guess, right?
Yes, within the variance was granted. Yes, that's correct. No, I don't, once that variance was granted, then anyone that obtains that property and use it with the variance with regard to any permissible R3 use.
So they could split it up into two apartments even though there's no parking provided, correct?
Well, I don't know about, no, I'm not so sure there. That would, you would run into the parking issue there.
You would or would not?
That would, might run into the parking issue anyway, from what I'm hearing.
Right. That property can never have legal property, parking as a residential unit.
Right.
It's just not approved.
Right.
Without getting a variance.
Right.
Now, we're getting a little tricky here too because obviously, we have to be mindful of the fact that we can't apply our code in a way to make a property worthless. That would create issues for us too, potentially.
Why can't the owner turn that building into a garage if the church decides not to use it anymore? That way...
Yeah, that's right. The owner, the owner of the building could have had it into a garage. The owner of the old church.
Right. But that's what you were saying. Might have to buy, like they would be buying the entire parcel.
They'd be buying the existing lot.
Yeah, correct.
That's the only way to stop all this kind of stuff from happening, is if they buy the whole lot.
Amy, aren't duplexes special uses for R3? I mean, don't people have to come in to get a duplex?
Yes.
Okay. So they just can't chop that up and do...
No. No.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or discussion? If not, we've got a, an ordinance on the agenda. This is planning and zoning case, PZ20-PO1, 200 West Crawford Street, a variance to allow a minimum lot size, 12,000 square foot to 9,900 square feet and a maximum lot coverage of 30 to 39%. This is ordinance number 20-04 and it would be a motion to adopt that ordinance and the findings of fact from planning and zoning. Is there a motion?
I'll move it. March.
Is there a second?
Morevka will second.
A motion by trustee March, seconded by trustee Morevka to adopt ordinance number 20-04 and accept the findings of fact from planning and zoning.
March?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Ann Bowden?
No.
Okay.
So that's three no's and two yeses. So that motion fails. So what happens now? Just...
I don't know. I guess maybe Mr. Barron, if you want to go back to your, to the church and see if, if there's another approach that they would like to take based on the discussion that was held here. I mean, we, you could, we could talk tomorrow, maybe, and revisit it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
If I hear.
All right. Item B, proclamation. GWRA Motorist Awareness Program Proclamation. Whereas the members of Goldwing Road Riders Association, Motorist Awareness Program of Illinois and other organizations continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness programs to the general public and to the motorist community of Illinois. And whereas motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across the state and nation, and whereas it's crucial that the citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, whereas state motorcycle organizations across this country will be conducting a variety of activities to promote motorist awareness and safely sharing the road with motorcycles and will be reminding riders to be more visible to others. And whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed countless volunteer hours to their communities, and whereas all motorists should join GWRA MAP of Illinois in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. Therefore, I, Steve Cross, Village President of Peatown, Illinois, do proclaim May 1st, 2020 to May 31st, 2020 as Motorcycle Awareness Month and encourage motorcycle awareness and safe motoring for all. Do we need a motion to accept that proclamation?
Morevka will motion.
Second?
Second. Jones.
Motion by trustee Morevka, seconded by trustee Jones.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Bowden?
No.
All right. Item C, Community Development Block Grant, Public Facilities and Improvement Application.
I received a communication on April, can you come over here so they can hear me? I received a communication on April 16th that the county was accepting grant applications for community block grants. They have a public facilities and improvement grant. And upon discussing the South Second Street project with the grant administrator, she felt that it would be a good fit and she gave me the go-ahead to submit it. There's a low to moderate income requirement. I do need board approval to move forward with the application. Prior to accepting any award, though, I would need to do a public hearing and a resolution. I'm asking for $200,000 to design and install stormwater along South Second Street to mitigate the water flow and ice damming along Route 50 around, that goes towards Route 50. The subsurface water coming from the farm field would need to be found and tied into the storm sewer to alleviate the flooding that infiltrates their crawl spaces and comes up through the sump pumps and goes into the street. The tile survey that we undertook is underway and files from the CAD, their CAD, has been transferred from ComEd to the tile survey company and the farm owner has given permission to enter the property. I've also contacted the county about a CBD grant for the I-57 interchange and they don't have enough grant money for that project, but they have suggested that we apply for what's called a 108 loan. And that's a low-interest loan for, it's a 20-year term with less than 1% rate. So for those two things, I'm just asking for permission to apply for those. I would have to come back to you for permission to accept the awards.
Any questions or discussion?
Sounds like a great idea. I agree.
There's no discussion. I would entertain a motion to grant permission to the village administrator to pursue community development block grant funds.
Bowden will motion.
Second?
Morevka will second.
Motion by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Morevka.
Bowden?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
All right. Item D, payout request in the amount of $2,746.13 to JJ Newell, Concrete Contractors Incorporated, for the 2019 sidewalk replacement program. This was, where do we go? So this is pay request number two. This was just the, was it the 5% withholding from the previous payout? And everything has been...
Complete. They're just doing the final walkthrough and punch list. But all the construction's complete.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Jones.
Second?
Parker will second.
Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Parker.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
March?
Yeah.
All right. Questions of the press? No press, correspondence, communications, petitions?
Are we doing branch pickups in May? Everybody's still holding off until the governor gives the okay?
We were going to talk about that. Amy and I had had that discussion earlier today. So we haven't come to a decision yet. We'll talk with Public Works and make an announcement, you know, within the next couple days.
Okay. A lot of states piled up there.
Yeah.
Are other communities picking them up or what's their status? Do you know?
I don't know.
I don't know. I, you know, I think, I think as Dr. March said, I don't want to let this get too out of hand. And the reason that we did delay a month, you know, was because we didn't want to, with the social distancing, you know, it takes two guys, there are two people, you know, to run that chipper. But we'll just have to take a look at it and see, you know, if utilizing masks and if there's a way we can kind of work it, you know, where we can do it safely, we'll go ahead and do it.
Mayor, we had talked about doing a community cleanup day before this all happened. I saw the paper that I believe Mantino was doing one this weekend. You know, they're just passing out bags and, you know, people are just going and cleaning, you know, cleaning up the streets. Is there any thought that we could maybe still do that some weekend in May?
Yeah, I think we can take a look at it. Let's, let's kind of see what happens here. Actually, if you drive around the community, we're in pretty good shape. And I know Public Works, you know, had done a pretty good sweep, you know, of the town, trying to pick up too. So if we feel like we need or if it's warranted, you know, maybe we can shoot for the end of May, you know, with that, make that announcement at the next meeting.
Sounds good. I have one thing for Amy. I think we need to get ahold of the railroad about the crossing on Crawford. That has gotten horrific. It's unbelievable. I don't know if you've driven over it or not, but do it, do so. And if you can get on the phone and get somebody out here to resolve that problem, I mean, it's, it's terrible. It's a little...
Correct. They're really sinking down.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Parker will motion.
Second?
Morevka will second.
Motion by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Morevka to adjourn the meeting.
You know, they're just passing out bags and, you know, people are just going and cleaning, you know, cleaning up the streets. Is there any thought that we could maybe still do that some weekend in May?
Yeah, I think we can take a look at it. Let's kind of see what happens here. Actually, if you drive around the community, we're in pretty good shape and I know Public Works, you know, had done a pretty good sweep, you know, of the town, trying to pick up too. So, if we feel like we need or if it's warranted, you know, maybe we can shoot for the end of May, you know, with that, make that announcement at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
I have one thing for Amy. I think we need to get ahold of the railroad about the crossing on Crawford. That has gotten horrific. It's unbelievable. I don't know if you've driven over it or not, but do it, do so. And if you can get on the phone and get somebody out here to resolve that problem. I mean, it's terrible. It's a little...
Yeah, that's correct. They're really sinking down.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Parker, motion.
Second?
Morefka, second.
Motion by trustee Parker, seconded by trustee Morefka to adjourn the meeting.
Parker? Morefka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Bowden?
All right. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay healthy, everybody.
You too.
Yep.